Thank you. With that, we'll have real call members, please.
Mr. Jeter, District One.
Here.
Mr. Tipton, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Harren, District Three.
Here.
Mr. Bricky, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Mann, District Five.
Here.
Ms. Hood, District Six.
Here.
Ms. Addington at large.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, I look forward to approve the agenda. Is it to be amended?
Yes, I do have a couple items to add to the agenda. Item 10B, establish lease threshold for right to use at $10,000 for Gasby 87. And item 15B, authority to sign inter-agency agreement between Scott County and Scott County PSA for the Valen Hollow Water Project.
That's 15B?
Yes, 10B and 15B.
All right, thank you, ma'am. With that, I'll need a motion to approve the agenda as amended. But you do remember the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Hood, second, any discussion? All fair and able to say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is to approve the minutes from the September 7, 2022 meeting. If you've had a chance to look at that, I hope you have, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from that meeting?
So moved, Mr. Trump.
Mr. Tipton made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Addington, second, any discussion? All fair and able to say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is the citizen's expression period, and we'll read this little short statement, we'll get right into that. Citizen's expression period is upon the meeting, when anyone who wishes to address the board or staff may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name, where you're from, in the county, and what organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything that you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up to speak, as the law said, that starts.
They have not.
We have no particular order, we just ask that you take turns and speak your business. Any action will be considered after we close, citizen's expression. With that, we are citizen's expression, if anyone wants to speak, you may come to the podium and do so. Good morning.
Good day, everyone. My little horse this morning is kind of froggy coming out this way. My name is Fred Bishop, and I represent the John Duffield, I'm a member of the town council down there. And we're having some problems with our boundary lines. And they've suggested that I come before the board and bring it to your attentions. If I may, I've got some stuff I can hand out here that'll help know what I'm talking about. May I approach you?
You may, yes.
There's only two of these, man, I'll go and I'll let you to look at this, I'll look through it back. What do you have? Well, see, if you look, I've got those things numbered one, two, and three. And if you'll notice, they're all, all three different. I don't know where the problem started, I would imagine that it started with Lena Wisco making, I talked to the general down there, who the heck was that guy? Steve Gibson, I believe is his name. And he's, I talked to him on a couple occasions, and he's never tried to explain why we got two different, to show the boundaries down there are two different places, are different, actually different. If you'll notice, on the one, on the bottom down here, this is a 911 boundary line, I don't know who put this one out. The V tail down here on the side. But if you'll notice, the Duffield Boundary Line starting down on the lower right side in the middle there goes all the way up and across the line, it shows us being the boundary line. But starting on this cliff mountain way, 654 there, if you'll notice the blue line that goes up through there, that is the dry branch that comes out of Cliff Mountain. That's supposed to come, oh, it comes all the way down, it goes over and empties into the North Fork of Clinch. That branch, the way I've got it, and it got perhaps sure to show them, that is the boundary line up on the big stone end, it gets into here. If you, that's up on the big stone end. Or it comes up like that, it comes under the railroad and highway, it goes all down and empties back into the North Fork of Clinch River. Of course, I don't know where I come up with this, but most of your, all your boundaries, if you're adjusted or whatever, that way's supposed to be under natural circumstances, like a branch or top, right top of the hill or top of a mountain, it's in a straight line. And if you, of course, as I said, if you notice that straight line across there, that's the one that they're showing now, is our Big Stone Gap end line. Look at, if you look at number two now, it's, it's all different. See that little red line down here, which says Duffield School? See, that goes all the way up. And that line ties in to Dry Branch. And it goes on, and there's a little bridge right where that Beers and Cemetery is right there, where the water goes through there and makes its way over to the river, North Fork Clinch River. And look at, if you look at number three now, it's different, but it actually shows the same thing that I was talking about here on the number two map. And it also has the adjusted, when the county does some extended down on the bottom, down here where it says 11204, that's a new boundary adjustment that's taken place. It seemed to be like it was in November 04, I think is what it was when they did that. Yeah, it's noted down there. I think this map here was done by Mr. Gibson at Lena Wisco, and this is, I think, it says right down there. But this, this right there, if you notice how the yellow line goes all the way up and around, and that brings it all the way back down to the beginning. Now, that's the one, this is the map that I think is the right one. And like I say, it's been brought, suggested that I come for you guys to try to determine which one of these we're supposed to be using. And of course, I could go all the way, but to get the gist of what I'm here for. And I don't know what to tell you, because I know you guys are the governor of Scott County, and I think you have to go through the court procedure and you guys.
That's correct.
To make anything, any changes.
Any adjustments has to be approved by the board supervisors, and so. We have, we have hired a mapping person, and so we have, and maybe can help with this and get it established where it's supposed to be. I don't have a clue, but what you presented here looks good to me, about 1970, I think, the older little map. So I don't know, but we can do that, and Sally, you and Brady, you all can chime in here too, Sally, if you, your thoughts on it as to what needs to happen with it. But any adjustment, Lena Wisco cannot adjust those, and I'm sure they used whatever they thought was correct at the time. But anyway, we get our mapping person involved in it, and Ms. Cagley, our county attorney, to see exactly where the boundary lines are, but no change, if I'm correct, Ms. Cagley, it cannot be made without the enforcement vice approval, is that correct?
Right, and court proceeding, you know, just boundary line.
I understand you too.
Adjustment.
So I don't know if any adjustments been made unless it happened, you know, the historical knowledge I don't have, but maybe go back and look, and I don't remember it ever being that those boundary lines were adjusted, anybody else can remember. Sally, do you know?
Well, Lena Wisco gave me the most current, which is the 2004. And Mr. Bishop and I have talked a lot about this, in fact, he drove me around and showed me, you know, where he thought the boundary should be, and he feels that when they did the adjustment in 2004, they added an area, but they took an area away. So what he is proposing is the original area that was taken away be added back in.
Yeah, yes.
I think the 2004 adjustment was just the southern boundary, there wasn't anything to the northern boundary at that time.
Okay, because Mr. Bishop showed me that branch, and he said originally, you know, the boundary was, went along with that branch. So, you know, I think our mapping person can come up with a conclusion on that.
Another reason that I'd like to get this straightened out, the adjustment that was made before, that's where I live now, down on the Gate City side of that thing, they did that for the purpose of getting more bodies within the area there, like that. We're short a person in council down there now, we can't get any filled. And if we get this, if you look on that number one map there again, all those buildings or houses, all of that in there, that would incorporate them in there, and we could have some more people that may get interested in trying to help us out.
And this, for the board, this would not require additional people to pay taxes in Duffield, because there is no extra tax for the Duffield incorporated area.
So Thomas Village is not a part of Duffield then, the town of Duffield?
No, we don't worry about it. Stream of water comes from there.
I'm looking at here, that's what I was thinking, yeah. Yeah, we'll look at this and see, we can't tell you anything today, you know, for sure, but we have people that can look at it and determine whatever, whatever we need to do. But you're suggesting that the boundary lines be moved to include more people?
Yeah, I'm suggesting that it is, like this, map three.
Yep.
That's, that's where the purple, not the purple, the yellow line is, that would be the, all of the Duffield incorporated in there. That's, that's the reason it was, it's like all that, those road maps that showed you there.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm looking at here now.
Yeah, I appreciate everything you do to help get this along, and I don't think there's any way to get it done before election time, but I'd like to see that done now, so we can.
We'll get on it, let's say.
Make some changes.
All right, we keep this, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I'll keep that, but I want to, I want, I need to keep this to the map.
All right, thanks, Mr. Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Good morning.
Good morning. Nobody else jumped up, so here I am. Richard Gildonwater, 605 Ballfield Road, Gate City, Virginia. Think you remember me?
Do.
My objective here this morning is to, first of all, to appreciate the letter you sent to the governor about the roads in Scott County. I think Mr. Horns did a good job. I did find that two letters, see it? I find it interesting that 14 students at Twin Springs could get more done.
Yeah, I was impressed too with that.
Maybe we need to get them to write it, or better, however. I guess what I really would like to know this morning, have we heard anything as a result of these letters? Because I get asked by people in the community, did we do any good? And I said, well, I don't know, we sent letters to county, did their job, but I haven't heard anything, have you all heard anything?
There has been some personnel changes.
Which makes it in VDOT?
Yes.
I haven't heard that.
So other than that, I haven't listened. Mr. Horns, you've heard anything, so I don't, but I know there have been some changes.
I have met with the Bristol District manager, engineer, that's now over the Bristol District. After the first letter was sent to the governor, it came back down to the Bristol District Office, so we had a meeting. And since that time, the director of the Lena Wisco area, Lee Scott Wise, and the city of Norton, has changed, not because of the letter, that was just something that was already in the process. So Alan Sumter is back as our director, and he's going to be working to get some of our issues fixed with the roads. And he will be at our November meeting, his first meeting back in the area, and he will be here at the November meeting to speak to the board.
So the director, or what do you call him, is now in Bristol and not in Wise?
No, the Wise residency manager is Alan Sumter, and he will be at the November meeting. I've also met with the manager of the whole Bristol District, that's the 13 counties after the first letter, because the governor's office sent it to the VDOT commissioner, and then they sent it back to Bristol.
Okay, so something is going on?
It is.
Yeah.
Well, that's great, that's great. Is there anything we can do? We had planned on writing a letter from the citizens, you know, to, after we saw your letters. Is that still helpful, or would we just be?
I don't think it would hurt.
Okay.
Anytime a citizen get involved in something, like even here or at that level, it helps. And so, we seen what happened with those 14 kids that came here from Twin Springs, on the, within 48 hours, that road got mowed. So, anyway, it was a pretty quick response.
Yeah. Do you think I should send it directly to Governor Yonkin or to her, to her?
I encourage, why don't you wait until, let's meet with Alan, and I, except you, you can do it if you want to. I know Alan Sumter, and he will, the other people were good, but Alan, you know, he's really, really good at what he does. If you wanted to wait to give him a shot, give him a chance to come back, I encourage you to come back in November and hear him and speak directly to him, and maybe some assistants want to come and speak with him. But Alan will, I think you'll be pleased with him, and he'll use whatever he's got to get the job done.
Okay, so he's going to be here in November?
November, yeah.
Okay. Not to take any more time, I can, I read you one thing.
Use your time.
We did plan on putting in our letter.
Go ahead.
And it's, it's not long, but it says, would you kindly fix the road I was already taxed to fix, so I'm not causing damage to the car I am taxed annually to drive, when I purchased it with income you already taxed, which sits in the driveway of my home that is highly taxed?
That's, yeah, that's pretty good.
People feel, that's the general feeling of people, and I realize that we don't necessarily pay taxes that go directly to the road, that goes to the.
That's true.
But people just feel we're taxed and we're not seeing anything as it relates to roads. But I appreciate your time, I do know that there are three ladies here from our general area that want to speak to you about roads, I think.
All right, all right. Thank you, Mr. Gildonwater.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Well, good morning. I'm back, but I forgot a few of the meetings.
Go ahead.
I'm getting old, I can't remember, but I will try to be here in November, since you're saying it'll be good to be back. I'm Peggy Tyus from Snowflake Road, Jeremy knows the condition of the road, and the last meeting that I was at, we talked to VDOT.
Say your last name again.
Tyus, T-Y-U-S, Peggy. And the last time when we was at the meeting, talked to VDOT, and about the brush, and the curves where you can't see around, and whenever you, when you're on that road, you pray that you don't meet the bus, or the FedEx man, or the UPS man, and any other oncoming. But the ditches is just, and when they come to scrape the road, they pick it up at the places where it's the rock bed, they can't scrape a rock, and the thing. And we are so proud of the Twin Springs kids, we may try to get them on our roads. That can get more done than our soul folk.
Yeah, like I said, I was impressed with them too, they did a good job.
And have you been over Snowflake Road recently?
I've been through it recently, no.
Well, it's still, you know, the ditch in the road, I had pictures on my phone, but I left my phone in, because I don't know how to cut it off, and I didn't want it raining during the meeting.
I drove life one day last week, and.
Oh.
Down Valley Creek and Croft, I got a snowflake that way, so. I tried to drive them, some, you know, eventually I tried to get most of them, so, yeah.
Well, what do you think?
It needs work.
And another question, I mean, another thing that I think, you know, it's like the secondary roads, you need, they need to put the, to do a budget, like your personal, sometimes you have to rearrange your budget on your personal stuff, so you need to, you know, put it on the secondary road instead on the main road, so it's like the Veterans Memorial Highway was repaid, and there wasn't nothing wrong with it. And they did a good job, I mean, it's, it's good. And let's see, let me see, well, I guess it's just like Richard, I grips everything in all of them, I don't know why, there's so many roads in Scott County that aren't paid. And this six-year plan, we've been on it for years and years and years. Is that still in effect, that six-year plan?
It is. But this year, but this year, there was no, the money they had wasn't enough, because their payment price is gone, if there wasn't enough to do any projects on secondary roads, the rural rustic roads, there was no money, was not enough to do any of the projects.
Well, they have had been, haven't they?
Yeah. Well, there has been, but there's just not been, never been enough, and so.
But that's something you need to keep in mind, though, as time, when they do let that money go, currently, it's not official that it's on there, that the Snowflake Road's on there.
Well.
So as, as, you know, I've asked several times, you know, two years ago, I guess is when we were saying we'll put roads on there.
Yeah, it's next in line.
Yeah, it's, but it's not right, is that right? It's not on the VDOT's plan?
It's not on the VDOT plan, but we have a list of.
Right.
Roads that were approved two years ago, as money becomes available on the six-year plan, that Snowflake Road's the next one to be on there.
So, so as time goes on, just make sure.
And how do we do that, through our supervisor?
Through the supervisor.
And we look at that every spring.
Yeah.
Okay, well, come spring, please. And it's like Ballfield Road, McConnell, all the dirt roads, I mean, they're all bad.
But you, you're hitting the nail on the head, is the funding from Richmond. You know, we've, we've talked about, you know, some of the things they've done in years past, you know, they cut the funding for basically down, down here, they closed the shop at Nicholsville, closed the one at Gate City. You know, there's a lot of things that, that happened that cut us out. And now, you know, manpower is a thing, so there, there's going to have to be some budget changes with VDOT from Richmond, because I think it's 2008, 2009, you know, they really, they really cut us bad. You know, so there, there needs to be a crew just for the secondary roads.
I agree.
You know, and that, but I, you know, so if you all do send a letter, that, I think that needs to be a part of it. You know, the, the funding has to change.
Who all would we need to send the letter to?
Well, I mean, we, we sent ours to Delegate Kilgore, Senator Peian, and Governor Yonkin. So you could, you could include all three of them, if you're going to.
Oh, okay.
You said something about them paving that was memorial, the muddy potholes in that road, but what happens, they put money into a pot, and you have your primary, secondary, and they cannot, through the general standard, they cannot move money from one pot to the other. When I send paid five lanes wide, that didn't need to be paid, did the emergency lane, you know, you go, you go a mile, it's five miles, you could go on a dirt road, one lane wide, you know, but, but they will not move, they're not allowed to move money, and they will spend it somewhere where, you know, they're like, like what happened there, I mean, they, you know, they, they did that. And so, anyway, it's just the way it is, and I don't think they'll ever change that, but I wish they'd let us decide, have some say in what roads that needs to be worked on, and we don't have any say-so in it, no. They never come to us, when they, when they pave a road, we, when they start doing it, is when we know they're going to do it. It's like the bridge, Dr. Weed, know they were going to do Route 23 Bridge across the Twin Springs River, I didn't know about that, till they started doing it, and then that Mrs., Ms. Horns, she drove it, said they, you know, they found, she found out, that's how she found out, were driving it, they were working on a bridge. And usually now, like the monks at the curve in the water gap, the bridge, we knew about that, that wherever it said it, but this one here, I didn't know about it. But they put money in those pots and you can't move it.
Well, that ought to be changed.
Absolutely, I agree.
This board should decide what roads need to be done in this county, but we have no say-so.
Well, we'd like to put our road in that pot.
I'm with.
Short and, not taking up your time, but all secondary roads in Scott County are bad and ours, I know somebody that lived on another dirt road, they had drove ours, and they said, well, we have to say your road is rougher than ours, so.
It is, ma'am.
Thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, with that, we'll come out of citizen's expression, and do thank everyone for the time to speak. On this same topic, it's been a couple weeks ago, I was at the dollar store in Dunghannon, and they have some guys on motorcycles there, and they were from Connecticut, they were from Illinois, and some other place, and they said, the roads there compared to here is unbelievably better here, but they have the weather issues. They don't pave roads right, they patch, instead of motorcycle, you can't ride on the roads because they're so patched, and the weather, the potholes and stuff, and said, we love to ride, ride a road here because, you know, it's smooth riding, they don't have a lot of the issues that they have in the northern states. Well, they have some bad weather, and they just, they patch all the time, if you ever drive those roads, they do, they just patch them, and it's like riding a horseboard, you know, most of the time, because, he said, we love the roads here, and I said, can I take you to one of our meetings, and I asked you all to say that, because, they said they love it here, they love the roads that we have, because they're not patched and potholed and all that stuff for motorcycle. All right, thanks, everyone. Next item, anything else in citizen's expression from any of you folks? Next item is item seven, Dr. Westover's here from Mount Neppa Park Community College, so if you'll come, please.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Good, good, thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time, appreciate all the work that you all do, I know it's a sometimes thankless job, but civic responsibility is really important these days, and thank you for what you're doing. I'm here just to kind of share a project that we've been working on at the college, and give you a little general update right now. Our fall enrollment, we're down just a little bit from where we were last year. We were actually, we held steady during the pandemic. A lot of students who could take online classes did and finished up their degrees, and we had our largest graduating class last spring. We're down about 5% in head count right now, similarly across regular FTE and dual enrollment. So our dual enrollment is down just a little bit, that's because our schools are smaller. Same with our, our general population, we've lost a higher percentage of our population than our enrollment decline, but we are about 5% down this fall. We've got some new programs that are assisting too, just started, and we have a clinical research coordinator position, which is an allied health position, basically a non-clinical health position, so folks who might be interested in health information management, we're down kind of that path, it's an opportunity for them to work. it's an opportunity for them to work in a clinical research setting and to be the coordinator of, of a lot of data collection. The reason I'm here today is that we have been, we've been celebrating our 50th anniversary. We kicked it off in October of 2021. And we'll be wrapping it up here at the end of this year. Homecraft Days is, of course, October 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. I invite you all to come and join in that. If you have the opportunity, it's always a, a good time. We, uh, as part of our 50th anniversary, our advisory board, our, our college advisory board and our foundation board both committed, our advisory board actually passed a resolution for the college to work on achieving a, a promise program similar to what Tennessee offers. Uh, so that students who want to come to me, community college can come debt-free and who, who may not have the resources to pay for tuition can have tuition covered. So we've been working on that for a little over a year. Our foundation director, Dr. Andy Greer, who couldn't be here today. She's at the Tobacco Commission meeting, trying to get some funding for our workforce scholarships with the Tobacco Commission. But we've been working on a, a promise program for Mountain Empire Community College and for our service region and our students. So, uh, I'll just kind of quickly go through the, some highlights here. As you know, we serve the, the counties of Scott, Wise, half of Dickinson, the west, half of Dickinson, the city of Norton, and the county of Lee. We have about 3,000 credit students, which in turn generates about 1,500 full-time enrollments per year. And about 2,600 non-credit students who are working on industry-recognized credentials or continuing education every year. 471 students from Scott County attended MECC last year and 83 2021 Scott County High School graduates attended MECC the following fall. Uh, we consistently ranked first in the 23 institutions of the regional community college system in our percent of head count that receive financial aid. We have very high need for our students. More than half of our program-placed students have what they call an, an expected family contribution or an EFC of zero, uh, which is the highest level of financial aid or financial need under federal guidelines. So I'm gonna show you just, uh, for the 2020 Scott County graduating class, we had an opportunity to talk to students about their plans. 83 attended two-year college, uh, either here or, um, Northeast State. 61 attended four-year colleges. 62 planned to go straight to employment. Six went to the military and 25 had no plans. So I can tell you that we are really focused on that 25. And possibly the 62 who directly go to employment, but maybe under skilled in the employment that they go into. So we're really trying to reach that population. I want to emphasize that our, our promise program isn't intended to compete with our local four-year colleges or universities, particularly UVA Wise. They're just up the road from us and any other four-year institution in, in our region. Uh, we know that for some students, uh, four-year college is the best choice for them. And many have already completed a community college degree or certificate through their dual enrollment opportunities. Uh, the MECC Promise Program is, is really intended to assist the students who have plans, uh, to enroll in community college post-high school or those that go directly to employment. And we really want to focus on those that are undecided and try and help them see an opportunity and a pathway to a higher paying wage into a future. This graph, I'm just quickly talk about this one. This graph is, is really designed to show how we've tried to decrease. These are our local graduates that have been enrolled in MECC. Um, and you can kind of see that in the most recent year, 2021, 317 local graduates and seniors enrolled at MECC. And we've been able to decrease the amount of tuition that's needed for students over the last five years. It's really kind of, this graph is designed to show how we've worked to reduce that amount of unmet financial need that a student has when they enroll in college. We looked at every graduating high school class for the last five years. About a quarter of our regional high school students have unmet financial need, meaning that they pay out of pocket, uh, for tuition expenses. Tuition is about $6,000 annually. And if a student enrolls in 12 credit hours, and the tuition costs increase if they take more credits. And, and I can tell you that in order to stay on track with a two-year degree, a student needs to take 15 credits every semester. So oftentimes, they're already behind because they're not funded at a rate that allows them to continue a two-year degree in two years. Uh, and part of that is the federal government. Part of that is, uh, just the way that colleges are designed to, to count 12 hours as full-time enrollment, 115 is what's really needed. This amount, after federal, state, private scholarship funding is applied, it's decreased by about 80% over the last five years. And our foundation has really worked hard. We've worked hard to try and find other funding to help students. And we've been trying to close that gap for students for a number of years now. Last year, we were actually contacted by the Gnan Foundation. Uh, the Gnan Foundation is a foundation that was built by the sale of the Bristol newspaper years ago. And we talked to them about our, our plans, our, our promise program. The fact that we would like to be able to give students in Southwest Virginia the same opportunity as those in Northeast Tennessee in terms of, uh, the opportunity to attend post-secondary education and without debt. They thought the idea was transformational and they loved our proposal and they promised us $750,000 to launch this program. So what we'll do with that gift is we'll invest it and we'll use the interest income in perpetuity to ensure that every high school graduate in our service region has an opportunity to attend college for generations to come. And we were challenged to use this gift to leverage other funding so that we could ensure the long-term financial stability of the program. So as you can see, over the last five years, we've decreased the total unmet financial aid for Scott County students from about 157,000 per semester to, or per year to 37,790 this year. We've approached the Columbus Fifth Foundation about Dickinson County and they're willing to provide funding for every Dickinson County graduating student that completes a Columbus Fifth Scholarship application. We've visited with Norton City, uh, with Wise County, with Lee County. Norton and Wise have tentatively agreed to fund, uh, their gap. We've, I'm not sure about Lee. We do have a, a large scholarship that we just received in 2022 from the Nor, the state of Norman Graver, who was a Big Stone Gap resident. And that gift, along with about a hun, or a million in Buccaneer scholarships that have been provided to the college, will ensure that every union high school graduate in Big Stone Gap will be able to attend tuition-free. So we're, we're, we're kind of putting together something that we'll be able, that we'll be able to announce for our entire service region. Our foundation endowment has, uh, our foundation has actually agreed to fund anything that, that exceeds the amount of our gap. So if we can put this funding together and if we end up having more students come than we expect, um, our foundation has committed to taking unrestricted funds and utilizing those to, to ensure that we don't have any students who fall through the cracks. So we're kind of proposing a, a promise program for the students of Scott County. And we would announce this to the class of 2023 and announce that they would be able to attend Mountain Empire Community College debt-free for two years. They would just have to maintain a 2.0 grade point average, which is a C grade point average. Stay continuously enrolled, enrolled for up to two years or 72 credit hours, which is the, the equivalent of the completion of an associate's degree. They have to reside in the area and provide proof of residency, be a Scott County resident and a Scott County graduate. Complete a federal financial aid scholarship because what we plan to do is have them exhaust all opportunities for scholarships available through everyone else. And this would be the last dollar scholarship that would fill in if they weren't eligible for federal financial aid or for the, um, the state G3 program. G3 has, has closed the gap a lot, but it doesn't cover things like teacher education or any four-year degrees. It's mostly for quick, short industry-recognized credentials or short-term workforce programs that are designed to go straight to employment. That would be a last dollar scholarship for tuition only. And right now, our, our gap is about $43,000 in Scott County. We've been able to close that gap from over 100,000, almost 200,000. You all may know about the Scott County Endowed Scholarship. We've been raising funds for the Scott County Endowed Scholarship for a few years now. Those funds go not just directly to high school graduates, but to all Scott County residents. So those funds would continue to, to wrap around and cover all Scott County residents. This would be particularly for the graduates, uh, who are coming out of high school in perpetuity. So starting with the class of 2023, we would be able to make this promise to them. So I am, uh, just here to kind of share that opportunity and, and of course, uh, ask if there would be any funding available to close that $43,000 gap for Scott County. And it would be wonderful to be able to announce and to know that we have the funding to announce and to be able to support every student in our service region and to be able to say, you can come to college debt-free with no tuition cost. I know we hear a lot sometimes about the argument that students need to have skin in the game, um, that they need to have an investment in their education. And I can tell you that, um, I agree. They do still have book expenses. I don't know if anyone's connected with a, a college textbook lately, but the average college, college textbook is about $200. So if a student's taking five classes, they're looking at $1,000 just in textbooks. They still have the cost of transportation. We are a commuter campus. We don't have a residence hall, so students still have to find a, a way to get to us. They have, uh, internet expenses, living expenses, and other needs that they'll have to cover on their own. I can also tell you about 75% of our students work, over half work full-time and still come to college full-time. So they really have a lot of skin in the game. College is hard and they still have to put in long hours of study to maintain their scholarship funding. And they'll have to pay for additional expenses outside of tuition. So hopefully the MECC progress, Promise Program will remove the financial burden of paying tuition, but it doesn't remove the challenges of earning a college degree, which are still there. So I would entertain any questions that you might have about our promise program or, or any other questions about the college that I might be able to answer.
Well, $43,000 is not a big, a, a large, huge amount like you would, you know, to cover what it covers. The budget committee, whoever will be, can look at this during the next budget cycle and say, it would be worthwhile, I think. I graduated from Southwest Community College a long time ago. And was actually a co-op student through this and a coal company. And so it worked, it would work for me. And, uh, so it's, it was hard to work a full-time job in a coal mines and go to school too. I don't know how hard that was. But it paid off.
And, uh, thank you. You know what? I can share more data with you around the return on investment for students economically and if you retain students. And our hope is those, those students who are not engaging in post-secondary, after their high school, they're not engaging in work and they're not engaging in college. Our hope is that we can catch some of those and get them on the right path and, and retain them in the area. And also to retain some of our talent. You know, and to be able to say, this area gave to you, come back and give to this area and, and engage in some of that civic responsibility. Thank you. And I'll be available. You all know how to reach me at the college if you have any questions.
Any other questions, comments? Any questions, comments?
On the, on one of your charts, I believe it was a, a bar graph. It showed between 17 and 18, 1917 and 18, there was a big drop. When did Ames Scholar start? Was that when Ames Scholar started?
Um, Ames actually started in 2008, I believe. It was about 10 years before I got here. And Ames, what it does is it, uh, it funds the first two years. If they're an Ames Scholar out of high school, it funds the first two years at, at MECC and then the second two years at UVA Wise. So we've got about 75 students in that program from across the service region this year. And we've really, we've strengthened that program. We, um, those students now get an iPad, just like the UVA Wise students, as soon as they come on our campus. Uh, they get activity passes so they can go engage in campus life at UVA Wise while they're still freshmen and sophomore level at, at MECC. So we've really tried to strengthen that connection. What was happening were a lot of students would come and do the first two years and then they wouldn't go on to their four-year degree. And the, probably, I hate to say this, but the most worthless in terms of labor market value degree is a two-year degree that was designed to transfer to four years. So if a student stops out after two years and doesn't go ahead and finish their bachelor's degree and they're in an associate degree program that's designed to do that, oftentimes that two years doesn't have real value for them in the, in the labor market. So we've tried to strengthen the Ames Scholarship in that way, but that won't go away. G3 won't go away. It funds a lot of industrial technology programs, a lot of IT, a lot of healthcare. Uh, we, we do also currently have a lot of endowed scholarships, just personal scholarships, you know, like the, the one I mentioned in Big Stone, the Buccaneer Scholarship. Lee County has an endowed scholarship. And what we'll do is redirect funds for those. We're not necessarily redirecting, but still allow those funds to go to students who weren't necessarily this year's graduating class. So this, this pot of funding, this promise program is designed for a kind of a controlled number that we know will be coming in and we kind of can see those numbers for the next four years and know that we can sustain.
Ames Scholars also have the scholarship coming out of high school. This is not, this is, it's, it's 2.0 or C average.
Yeah.
Coming in, so.
Yeah.
I, I wish you the best in this. It sounds like a good program.
Thank you, thank you. We're, we're excited and we will, we, uh, I, I think we're committed to it. Even if we don't get the funding, we'd love to, you know, we'd love to have the, the funding and to be able to close that gap and, and not have to worry. But we know that you all have other priorities too. We just love to be one of them. So when, when the budget come time, budget time comes, I'll push on Freedom a little bit to help me go into lobbying.
And you learned about secondary roads today too.
You know, I used to live on gravel roads, so I feel your pain. I just, totally do.
Thank you, ma'am.
And her presentation's on your tablets.
And I left you all some 50th anniversary pins.
All right, good.
Market the college for us a little bit. Thank you.
I had seen this morning that Virginia Tech's enrollment's up 8% and they were, it was a huge number. And I'm surprised they run that much. It's on the news this morning how much their enrollment was up, so. I, it'll probably come back down there too eventually, the 5% drop you talked about, but I would say it'll come back. All right. Thank you, ma'am. Next item is item eight. Mr. Keith Wilson here, need a letter of support for a trail grant. How you doing?
I'm doing well. I, uh, I'm not Dr. Andy Greer, faces some confusion. Called out. Before I do this, I, I do want to reinforce, I serve on the advisory board for Mountain Empire Community College, along with Freedom. Yeah, a couple others. I, I made this presentation, basically her presentation to the Sullivan County Commission in Sullivan County, Tennessee in 1999. And at that time, I asked for a penny. A penny on the tax assessment would cover the program for all the students in Sullivan County. And they adopted it. A penny at that time was $200,000 in the Sullivan County budget. And they adopted it. In 2014, that program was adopted by the state of Tennessee and is now statewide. I think Virginia will get there as well. But here's the main reason why I think, why I said, and why I believe we should do this. Kids raised to the expectation of their parents and elders. And I think we need to tell kids that a high school diploma is not sufficient in today's economy to participate in the labor force at the level most of them desire to do. It's just not true that a high school diploma is going to be sufficient. And so the leadership of the county and the leadership of this company by saying, our expectation, we're going to set up a K through 14 system because you need credentials or a degree post-high school to fully participate in today's economy. And that expectation is set when the leadership of the county and et cetera says, we're going to make it possible. We expect you to continue your education and we're going to make it possible for you to do that. And so by raising expectations, you challenge those 25 students to come and do and complete their education because a high school diploma just isn't enough for most kids. As a matter of fact, at Eastman Chemical Company today, you can't get a job, any job, without a post-high school degree. No job. At the Times News, when I ran the Times News, the same job that you could get with a high school diploma, you could get without a high school diploma. In other words, the distinction wasn't a high school diploma. You had to have training post-high school to get any kind of decent paying job. And that's true in today's society. And so I think setting that expectation, the county setting that expectation is, is a real reason. It's not that much money and it sets an expectation. So that's my pitch on that. I'm actually here to talk about, um, walking trails. I served as the president of the Daniel Boone Williams Trail Association, but I really didn't get involved in this. but I really didn't get involved in this particular project through that. Mayor Bob Richards asked several of us to serve on a visioning group for Gate City. And we went through about a year's process of looking at ways that we could improve the life and livability of Gate City, Virginia. And back in March, April of this year, we had a community-wide visioning process. I don't know, I don't believe any of you all had that. In any event, we brought in several invited thirty or forty people in Gate City and surrounding area to come together and talk about how to make improvements, what the citizens of Gate City would like to see in their community. And several things came out of that. We then had a voting process and eliminated, and came up with about four or five things on that list to do. Pickleball courts, by the way, is one of them that came out of that, that meeting, which I'm sure you've heard of. The other one was, there was a strong desire for an opportunity to walk, for walking trails and walking opportunities. Gate City is somewhat limited in that. And there was a desire, a strong desire, to have the ability to take a walk. Dr. Greer and I kind of took on that project to help see where we could go with that. And we went to visit, first of all, Jimmy Atkins down in Wisco, because he's the pro. And got some maps and sat down with Jimmy and started looking at that. It became quickly apparent that Moccasin Gap was the issue. Now Jimmy tells us and showed us, I think it's Kingsport, MDOT or whatever that, those initials are. Frida, what's the name of that group out of?
MTPO.
MTPO has a plan for Scott County. Scott County or at least Gate City, Weber City are part of that Kingsport planning group. However, when we looked at that plan, the plan, and I don't mean to diminish it, for Gate City was painting a line on the side of the highway and calling that a bike route into Gate City. Basically, that didn't seem, didn't seem safe to me. It didn't seem sufficient. Certainly, it had nothing to do with walking and the opportunity to walk and hike, et cetera. Every time I go to the doctor, he tells me walk, so. But beyond that, Jimmy also indicated to us that if you're going to get VDOT's attention in today's world, you have to connect destination with destination. They're not interested in recreational trails or anything of that nature at this point in time. And so when we looked at the map and looked at what needed, could be done, the idea came that connecting Gate City sidewalk system with the Weber City sidewalk system could be accomplished, but there's no way to do that. You know the topography better than I, without addressing that stretch through Moccasin Gap. Now, Moccasin Gap, as you probably know, was the route of the Great Warrior's Path. It was also the pathway of the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail. The reason being, that's the only ground-level water gap through Clinch Mountain for 60 miles. So you have to navigate your way through Moccasin Gap somehow, some way. It, when we, when we looked at the map, the nice thing is we recognized that there's two overpasses that could in fact serve to help get that done. One of them on Kane Street, I have, I just have three copies of this. The line in black is the route that we identified quickly with a magic marker, that we could take and accomplish that. It starts at the municipal parking lot by Broadwater Trading Company and it terminates at a soccer field in Gate City, right behind, or Weber City, right behind Food City, who's a soccer field down there. And by taking that route, which basically follows Little Moccasin Creek and Big Moccasin Creek, you could in fact create a walking pathway from connecting the Gate City sidewalk infrastructure with the Weber City sidewalk infrastructure and create quite a, quite a lengthy walking opportunity all the way, frankly, in connecting, if they complete the project, with Tennessee. And the green belt would be the long-term opportunity. The Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail Association is interested in it because it is probably the most historically significant piece of real estate in Scott County. Moccasin Gap was the first gap that the westward movement had to navigate to get from Tennessee, Virginia, Tennessee, North Carolina into Kentucky and the Midwest. There were three gaps. It was in Commonwealth, Moccasin Gap, Kane Gap, and Cumberland Gap. Cumberland Gap has recreated a walking trail. The association is currently working on a project to open up Kane Gap for a walking trail. And the third gap is of course, Moccasin Gap. And Moccasin Gap is quite frankly, to my mind, the most important. Were it not for Moccasin Gap, nobody would ever have heard of Cumberland Gap because it took aligning the three gaps to get into Kentucky. And so you have the most historic spot down here. It used to obviously be a walking trail, but VDOT paved it. And it's going to be difficult, as VDOT tells us. We had a meeting with VDOT last week, a virtual meeting, and gave it to them and discussed it. And they of course said, gee, that's, that's a really good idea, but that's going to be tough to do. We need to plan it. We need an engineering study. And we said, yes, we do. We need an engineering study to see the feasibility of it. The engineering study is apparently $100,000. Gate City doesn't have $100,000. But there are grants and opportunities. One that was just established by the state, by Commonwealth, was the Ready, Set, Go program to do that very thing. Unfortunately, Gate City nor Weber City qualify for that program because they're covered by the Kingsport Planning. So they looked at Kingsport Planning to do it. And Kingsport Planning, we learned, gets a grand total of $5,000 annually for that kind of work for Southwest Virginia project. Leno Wisco gets about $5,000 to do planning for you all as well, which is grossly insufficient to do the work. So there's kind of a catch-22 in trying to get this plan together. In any event, we got VDOT to say, we'll go back and try to find a way to do an engineering study. We think the plan is viable. We think it's something that would make a lot of sense, but we're going to have to find the funding to do, to do that engineering study. The good news is, I'm not asking you for money. All I need you to do, all we ask you to do, is want to endorse the project. Give us your blessing that Scott County, I have an endorsement from Gate City Town Council. I have one from Weber City Town Council. And I have one from the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail. We would like the county to give us a letter of endorsement. We would also like you to consider putting this pedestrian bike pathway in any of the planning documents that you have on your wish list for other things like Gate City is going to do and Weber City is going to do. Because as we learned, unless it's on one of those planning documents, VDOT isn't going to look at it. We think we can do this. I think it'll take a long time. I think it'll take a lot of research and et cetera, et cetera. But it's not going to happen unless the county and the cities put it on the planning document and unless the cities and county endorse that as an idea. So that's why I'm here today to ask for a letter of endorsement. Any questions?
Would Kingsport eventually hook that to it? With the green belt, whatever, kind of?
The, the plan that Jimmy showed us actually brings the green belt all the way into Weber City. But without some passageway through Moccasin Gap, you can't get to Gate City. You just can't.
I don't like the thing along 23, I mean, the painted line. I don't like that either.
It's probably the best they feel they can do. But honestly, that is not a safe route. It's just not safe. And I don't know how they get across the bridge into Gate City. Am I allowed to try to ride a bike across that? Are you kidding me? I certainly would have a child on it, that's for sure.
To cross Big Moccasin Creek, would there be a bridge, a pedestrian bridge or?
There would probably have to be a pedestrian bridge across the creek, somewhere in that stretch. Just ironically, to me, probably nobody else, that just struck me that, you know, this county only has one ABC store. It's in Moccasin Gap and you have to drive to get there. Only sober people go to that. But I don't know. It just seems odd.
Put that down as a belly issue. Can't walk to ABC store.
Maybe a, a bridge over to the ABC store, I would. Anything else? Thank you for your consideration.
Have any comments or questions for Mr. Wilson?
I probably should have introduced myself as Pam Cox's husband. That probably should have started.
I made the connection. I made a lot of.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. This letter of endorsement, a letter of support that he's asking for. I think it's an uprider to do that. I like trails. I like the Creeper Trail. I like the, the Green Belt. I'll use the one at Mendo. I haven't done it yet, but I'm going to. Anyway, I love trails. So anyway, this letter, I think, would be something that we, that should be a part of and encourages to happen. So any comments or do we need a motion? Need a motion to, to do this letter of support?
I'll make the motion. We approve the letter.
Mr. Bree has made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton, a second? Any discussion? All right, everybody, send aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So you get the letter and we'll get it done. Next item is out of nine. Some folks here from the Virginia Department of Health program update. So if you can, please.